Good evening and welcome to the City Commission's study session for Tuesday, December 1st. It's already here, December 10. I'd like to welcome everyone, to remind you also to turn off your cellphones, and that this will be televised live and then later on, Channel 2. For our study session items tonight, we're going to have the Capital Improvement Program and the Sidewalk Committee Multi-Year Plan, and we're going to go ahead and start with the Capital Improvement Program.
Okay. Well, I'm going to sit here and relax tonight.
Are you? You're not quite retired yet.
I know, I know. I'm getting there. We're getting ready for it.
Are you really?
No, but I'm, uh, I'm prepping for it. Paul Kramer, our incoming City Manager, is going to present the CIP tonight. This will basically be his plan. He's the one that, when you ultimately approve this, he's the one that's going to implement it starting next year. So, I feel it'll incumbent that he do the presentation tonight.
Okay.
So, Mr. Kramer, it's all yours.
Okay. And Scott and Dan Williams, who are the overflying instructor, were instrumental in this entire process. I would like to thank them upfront with all of the department heads. So, the 2016-2020 CIP, what I'm going to show you tonight is a little recap of what the CIP is, how it's funded. It is substantially different than the operating budget. Just a short PowerPoint on the funding sources and how the CIP is structured. So, there are three primary sources of support for the CIP. CIP sales tax revenue, the countywide sales tax revenue, and general improvement bond proceeds. I'll have a little bit more information on each of these in a second. There are also three secondary sources, KDOT and federal and state funds, operating budgets, those are from our enterprise funds, refuse and sewer primarily, and general obligation bonds. You can see the breakdown of how, over the next five years, where the funding comes from. Countywide sales tax is the majority of the funding, at 32 percent, a little over 11 and a half million, and the other sources range anywhere from 7 to 9 million in funding. CIP sales tax revenue, that's a one-half cent sales tax, city sales tax, no sunset on that. That was created in the 1980s to fund the library and community center buildings, and it can be used for capital projects and community center operations. In 2016, we're estimating just a shade over $2 million in this source. Second major fund is countywide sales tax. It was, primary rationale was to build the Justice Center in the 90s, and as everybody is well aware, it was renewed for a 20-year period extending through 2036. The charter ordinance that we adopted at the renewal of the countywide sales tax defines its use as debt service, economic development, infrastructure, and capital projects. We're looking for 2016 amount of $2.6 million. General improvement bonds, charter ordinance 37 allows for bonds each year for specified general improvements. This is where we're going to start to get into part of the presentation for tonight. The amount of bonds when the charter ordinance was passed was set to 16.86 percent of city property taxes levied in a prior year. And if you're wondering why the 16.86 percent, it was so we could bond a specific amount of money. At the time, we believe it was $750,000, and to get there, 16.86 was the number, is how you back into $750,000. And keep in mind that this is based on taxes levied, property taxes levied. So, when we decreased the property taxes 20 mils, we decreased our bonding, general improvement bonding authority from 1.75 million roughly a year, down to just over $1 million a year. So, that means about $750,000 less per year in CIP funding. It is also important to note that the GI bonds are the only source, are the source that we've used for road resurfacing and reconstruction in the CIP. So, if we were to increase our road resurfacing and reconstruction budget, we would have to find it elsewhere, as our GI bonding authority has been reduced. Here is a look at the city property taxes levying. You'll see the drop in 2015, that we just mentioned, continuing in 2016. The red line below represents the 16.86 percent of taxes levying. The next slide will blow that red line out into its own chart, and that represents the general improvement bond authority. You'll see the numbers for 15 and 16 hovering just over $1 million. What we have proposed in 2016 to 2020 CIP is to change the formula and the amount of bonds and change it to 28 percent of city property taxes levied. And then, we would also propose to use those bond proceeds for street resurfacing and reconstruction. Our roads are in bad condition. They need more than the funding we've been allotting over the last 10 years, 20 years, the same amount for reconsor, uh, resurfacing and reconstruction. So, that would be the proposal that is included tonight. To show this graphically, this is what it was, and the proposal would bring it back up to previous levels. It would, uh, the budget is already set up through a bond and interest to accommodate this. It would just simply bring us back to the levels of GI improvement bonds that we had pretty much from 2007 forward. That's the quick overview of CIP funding sources. If there are any questions on that, I'll take those now, or we'll get into the program. What do you think, Dan?
I have a question. So, that, that last slide you had, this year, 2015, so we budgeted 1.7, but we only got 1, 1 million? Is that what you're saying? Excuse my ignorance, but...
I think they knew...
I mean, do we budget for this amount?
It was going to go down, and I think you're actually levying, you're actually bonding just over a million.
Okay. So, we didn't go over our budget in that?
Yeah, we know.
Budgeted for that.
So, that, that one's unavoidable.
Okay.
The question is, going forward, do we stay at that level, or do we move back up to where we used to be?
Okay.
The debt service that we provide to pay those bonds off remains the same.
Okay.
That's why we're projecting to go up from 16 to 28 percent.
Okay. Thank you.
So, if you'll turn to, would be page 1, the summary tab. The first, oh, page and a half are existing or already approved CIP projects. I'm going to go through those quickly. Some of them don't need much attention, they're ongoing community center operations, but within some of these line items, there are some new focuses for 2016 through 2020, so we'll go through those. The asphalt overlay you see first, a little over $9 million, that includes the increased formula. Should the Commission not go with that formula, that number would be reduced. Sewer line rehabilitation, we allocate between a little over half a million dollars a year to do sewer line rehabilitation throughout the city. Second Street Bridge over Three Mile Creek, that brings us to our first item that we need to discuss. That project was originally planned in the mid-2000s as a repair project. Recent rate events have eroded the bridge, so the bridge must now be replaced. The original estimate now needs to be increased by about $1.1 million. We talked about this with the Commission a couple months back in relation to funding challenges that we're going to have forward. Our proposal is to allocate about a quarter million dollars in 2016 countywide sales tax, and then do a four-year temporary note for balance and pay the debt service with the countywide sales tax of about a quarter million a year until that project is paid off. The next, on page 1, economic development, that's part of the countywide sales tax allocation, as is debt reduction. Sidewalk improvements is the annual allocation that we use for sidewalks and cost share sidewalk projects. Community center operations, again, an annual allocation of $300,000 for community center operations. Equipment replacement, that is where, if you turn to page 59, we have the tab, that will include new, new items for this year. Those are vehicles that the city purchases as part of its replacement of its fleet. For 2016, we propose one police patrol vehicle, two police detective vehicles, a police K-9 vehicle, a fire administration vehicle, two engineering small SUVs, one streets pickup and one parks pickup truck. That all fits within the allocation that we have each year for equipment replacement. Next item down, animal control debt service, again, that goes through 2025. K-7 and Marion intersection is a cost share with KDOT. Storm drainage improvements, an annual allocation. Fire truck lease. We are proposing a change in the way that we replace the city's fire trucks. In the past, we have done, we've had seven trucks, and we've replaced them on a four-year schedule. The amount that we allocate for four years in the CIP is dependent on what truck is being replaced. Some are much more expensive than others. 146,000 was the last four-year allocation. If we get into an aerial truck, or a Quen, anything like that, it's going to be higher. We're also facing problems with replacing trucks every four years. You end up with a 28-year-old truck at some point, trucks in the 20-year range, running into maintenance issues and performance issues with those vehicles. So, the proposal that we have before you tonight would reduce the fleet to six trucks. We would replace three trucks in 2016 and bond them over 15 years. We would get rid of the three trucks that need to be replaced first, and then in 2020, we would bond an aerial truck for 15 years with a useful life on that of 20 years, and then in 2025, we would do the remaining two trucks. We have two that aren't that old, so they would wait till 2025. Through 2024, this proposal is revenue neutral, essentially, well, it is. But it would allow us to update our fleet, standardize our fleet, and get rid of the oldest trucks that we have, and allow us to drop from seven to six. We, staff has spent a great deal of time on this proposal and believe that what we have before you is a good way to go forward with our fire trucks. Public, going back down to the list, public safety communications are radios. Curb repair is similar to our sidewalks, it's an annual allocation. Library HVAC, we continue to work on that project, that was approved previously, and we will continue to work on that. Performing Arts Center HVAC, you can turn to page 43 for that one. You'll remember, we've been borrowing, we delayed that project a year, and we've been borrowing funds from that to pay for some projects this year, knowing that we're going to come back to it. We also heard last year at this same meeting that we needed to look at maybe, I don't want to say minimizing the project, but phasing it, and maybe cutting back costs to do what was essential at that, at that project. So, we do have Steve Grant here to answer some questions, but what we have before you is a three-year phase program whereby we would get the work done that we need to get done over three years, starting with 150,000, 550,000 in 2016.
Isn't it also substantially less than what was allocated previously?
Yes. We were looking at closer to, was it a half a million dollars? And we were down to, what, 362?
Yeah.
There's just not a way to do it for anyone in that and still have a system that would operate correctly.
And I don't have any problem with the phasing. I honestly prefer to do it that way.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
Continuing downtown hotel debt service, that's our obligation for the work we've done preparing for the Hilton Home 2. Financial software debt service, everybody's aware of the conversion we are doing to the new financial software system. Community center repairs, again, an annual allocation. Computer equipment, fire equipment, same thing. Downtown traffic signals, we continue to improve those. Police parks equipment, again, annual allocations. Fire SCBA, annual allocation. And the study park electric sign we approved, I believe, last year, which I assure me held off because of the project at Fourth and Poplar. It doesn't make sense to put that sign in while that, before that construction happens. So, they're going to put all the conduit in at that time for the sign, so the sign will then go up once that project is in the works.
Okay.
Biennial bridge inspection, that's a requirement. Fire breathing, air compressor, that was approved, I believe, last year for, for future years. Replacement firewalls, that's an IT item. Upgrade city-owned street lighting to LEDs, and I believe this completes that project, this, this $30,000 allocation. Fifth Street Bridge design, and the every other year Emerald Ash Board treatment for parks. So, that is all the existing projects, and within those existing projects are some stuff that will happen in the next couple of years. We could stop there if anybody has any questions on those projects.
No.
I do believe we have our Parks Director, as well as maybe the consultant who designed the phased approach for the PAC, should you have any questions on that project?
Do you want to halt? Any questions?
I talked to Steve this morning about that, so I'm pretty familiar with it.
Okay.
I'm fine with it.
All right.
Going into new projects, Second Street Bridge debt service, that's what we talked about. We're going to have to issue general obligation bonds, and the reason that that number is a little over 1.2 million rather than the 1.1 is because of bond issuance costs. Sewer plant replacement of ultraviolet lights, this is a direct result of the UV project that we have, the wastewater treatment plant. If you do look at page 67, that shows you the five-year spending, you'll see that it jumps from 74,000 for two years up to 200,000 a year after that.
Yeah.
That's because we're receiving the lights at a discounted rate, still based off of the initial purchase, and that exists for two more years, and then the price of those lights dramatically increases. We are exploring alternative ways of maybe running one channel versus two channels, alternating the lights, maybe not using all the lights at once to try to get those costs down, but those costs are going to be with us, you know, forever, so as long as that system is in place. So, that's just something that we're going to have to deal with.
Paul, are we limited to the number of bulbs that we can buy under this two-year?
Under the two-year?
The bulbs, there's no practical limit, but there is a warranty limit on them that, there's one set of warranty that runs from when you buy it, and then there's another warranty that starts from when you install it. So, we're trying to load up with them in those first two years.
That's what's my thought, is, is to buy two years' worth, you know, under this...
We're proposing...
Why stop there? Five years.
Yeah. At some point, there's, there's no warranty on the...
Right, that's what I was curious about.
But we believe that some of the changes we're evaluating in loading up on light bulbs first two years, hopefully, we can decrease years after that, three through five, because that's an awful lot of money, and they are single-source light bulb.
Moving down to 16th and Holman Drainage, and that brings me to another slide that gives a little more information, and it's also a bullet point in your intro letter. The Commission has expressed a desire to shift a little bit of the focus in how we address stormwater projects for the next, for this, at least this five-year CIP cycle, to projects that directly impact residential properties. So, staff has taken that directive forward and come up with a list of projects that we propose. It's a pretty aggressive project. For instance, let's start with 16th and Holman. That's the northwest corner of Limit and 16th. There's a drainage structure there, and it extends north to Holman. We're proposing design and construction next year. The next one would be 16th Terrace and Thornton Drainage. That has been a specific interest to a homeowner in the area who's been to the Commission meeting quite a few times. That one does require more extensive design. We propose design in 16 and construction in 17. We just don't believe that there's a way to design and construct it in 16, but this plan includes funding for design in 16 and construction in 17. Also, in the, in this same stormwater, is Three Mile Creek stabilization. This is at the east end, near the trailer, need to stabilize, and we pushed the design to 17 and construction to 18, is not quite as high a priority. We'll hit another one here in a second, 22nd and Vilas, that we have on the fast track.
Okay. I have a question about, a citizen contacted me, and she's had a chronic problem, Tammy Davidson. Would this Three Mile Creek stabilization include her area?
No.
No.
That's more in that 14th and Pawnee area.
In the 14th and Pawnee, okay. All right. And that answers my question.
I was directing her, and she, hopefully, she's listening tonight, and, which, I just couldn't tell which project was which.
Going down the list, continuing down the list, there's two before we get back to our next drainage one, the sewer dump trucks, again, for wastewater treatment, and belt filter press renovation, that's scheduled for 2017. That's the original 1993 belt press that runs constantly, and that's, the framework is okay, but all the internal workings, they need to be repaired and replaced. Next, we get down to our drainage project, 22nd and Vilas, everybody's aware of this to the west side of Henry Levinworth School, where the street is washed out. The street needs to be reconstructed, and there needs to be some drainage work done there. We do have this scheduled for construction in 2016. So, those are three pretty large drainage projects that we have on the books for 2016. Next one is Hawthorne Park restroom replacement. This is the last of the park restroom replacement projects. We've done a series of them over the last couple of years. This would be a complete tear-down and rebuild of that, of that restroom. Streets front end loader, the front end loader is used for snow removal, storm debris, and street material. We proposed that for 2017. Sewer building roof, this is the original roof at the wastewater treatment plant over the administration building from the 1970s. It's been hatched on and off over the years, leaking is a continual problem, and we do have that scheduled for 2016. Cody Park Playground Equipment, it's the largest and most-used park equipment in the city. We believe it's a destination park. It's expensive. It's what these cost. We are already running into maintenance item, replacing items on the bridge. We do have this pushed to 2017, but it's a big piece of, big piece of equipment. Sewer plant submersible...
Grinders.
Garbage grinders.
Is that what that is?
Yeah. For inorganic materials that would normally would wear out the pumps.
The things you learn in this class.
Before it gets to them, it will grind them up. So, we put, we did, sewer had wastewater treatment, had a number of items. We asked them to prioritize, and this one is pushed to 2018, as we have the belt press and the roof ahead of that. The next stormwater project is 14th and Pawnee. Mike, if you want to talk about this one in relation to the, the property owner, why don't you just go ahead and talk about this project?
This, this project was originally conceived in the master plan we did, but like a beach in the 90s, would be a detention basin north of Metropolitan on the federal prison property, which would reduce impacts downstream, basically from 14th to Metropolitan downstream to Ottawa Street. That detention basin is basically not going to happen at this point in the process, so we're evaluating other alternatives. There's a series of creek crossings that are undersized and creeks that are oddly configured that now we get to look at making improvements, and this will be to study that drainage basin basically from Metropolitan. The structures are from Metropolitan south to Spruce Street. What do we need to do to protect? There's about three houses that have direct flooding issues along their property, or you referenced is one of them. There's, there's a couple others as well, one immediately in her neighborhood, as well as another one downstream.
Good news, see you in a math on that one.
Make that happen.
Yes, okay. Thank you, sir.
Continuing Parks mower, this is a workforce mower. It's our second largest one. It does the soccer fields and many other areas in the city. I believe it's about 10 years old and has become a maintenance item. The next item on the list is Muncie Road, 10th to 20th. Right now, all we're budgeting in 2016 is to do the conceptual program, and I'll let, you and Scott, if you want to talk about this project a little bit. We're going to have a larger discussion, we anticipate a larger discussion about this going forward. However, that discussion would be better informed, should we have this conceptual study done, so we have a better idea of numbers of what the project would look like.
Yeah, you pretty well noted it. This would open up, as a residential collector road, it would open up vast amount of areas, undeveloped vacant land to the north and south of it for development. Several years ago, I started here in 2007, we had that one development that was going right behind, geez.
Wellington.
Wellington. And we were going to do a benefit district to start Muncie Road, to take it back to that development, and then eventually someday, take it from that point all the way on. Well, it gets a little difficult when you're looking at benefit district and, or looking at the developer foot, the costs to put that collector road in from 4th to 10th, or from 10th to 20th. So, this is what, we put this in this, this budget as a feasible project. However, we really don't know the cost until we do a conceptual plan, looking at the topography, doing some probable construction costs to get us exactly what we need to, to do to make this roadway work. You know, you've got some land acquisitions to do, you've got some topography areas to deal with. It's not all straight shot, so this $50,000 will at least get us an engineering study to give us more information, detailed information on what we would need to go forward with this project.
And this would also be tied to some of our economic development initiatives?
Yes. Yes.
Then we get into some, just some minor repair and maintenance items. Fire station car fitting that we phased over four years, all three stations, it's important. Fire station diesel exhaust removal system, it's a safety item, it's also an energy efficiency item. They use fans now, it's, it has to do with when the trucks are running inside the bays. This system is a much better system for, for removing that exhaust.
Is this for all stations?
Yes.
Okay. That's a lot of ground to cover for a little bit of money there, okay.
Service center canopy over the fuel pumps, if you've ever been out behind the service center, there are fuel pumps just simply standalone out there. It's for, you know, guard against the elements, guard against the sun at night, the canopy will be lit, you know, it's used at all hours, so it's, it's expensive, but big trucks run under that, so it needs to be a big canopy. That's what the cost is there. Remar Creek wall and trail repairs, I don't believe any significant repairs have been done since the trail was put in place. This is some concrete fill under, some, under to backfill. It's also to replace some failing areas, so it's just some standard maintenance that needs to be done on the trail.
Would this help with some of that slick area, the way the mud comes up, or not?
No.
No.
Okay.
Unfortunately, the way that wall was built and what's behind it, that's seeping through that area, you got to leave some kind of seepage to be able to occur, because if you don't, that water will push that wall right out.
Okay.
The pressure behind that wall.
Makes it kind of dangerous at times.
I know, I know.
Okay, now we're into the little bit smaller ticket items, and we'll go through these relatively quickly. Fire rescue tools are essentially the jaws of life, essential for our, for our operations. Baseball softball field upgrades, you'll notice there's not a lot of park stuff on here. We did want to try to work some of that in there, so this one is for South Side Park. They're off First Street to redo that baseball field, which is a popular practice field for that. There were two other fields proposed, we didn't fund them this year, we may look at those over the next two years, but in this one, it's just the South Side Park project. Community center railing, this is on the west side. It's what protects before that dip from the sidewalk, it's rusted out, needs to be replaced. Police K-9, that's a new police dog. Ivan is past his useful date, needs to be replaced. Community center exterior glass, if you're entering past the cage into the Riverview Room and you look out toward where the new flood wall is, there's a bank of windows that go there, and those windows are cloudy, they need to be replaced there with energy-efficient new, new windows. Woman pool slide restoration fits under keep in good shape what you have. That pool needs to be recaulked, resealed, and then it needs to be resurfaced, too. Um, that pool needs to be re-cocked, re-sealed, and then it needs to be resurfaced too. Engineering copier, uh, it's a big copier. We are combining two functions that we currently have two printers and, uh, getting a new improved printer that does both of those functions. Fire station sprinkler system refurbishing, um, sewer vector box de-water station, sewer pole camera, both wastewater treatment items. Police body cameras, this continues our march toward deciding, uh, to what level and, and working on police body cameras. And the police chief, is there anybody has questions on where we are and what we're doing with body cameras?
Probably using some of the other funds he has.
Um, we did for the server, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, community center security system, um, they simply don't have an adequate security system. This would increase the number of cameras in the building, um, and the, the monitoring of the.
Yeah, that's something that's been needed, yeah.
Engineering, uh, GPS equipment upgrades, um, the world of, uh, GPS continues to evolve and we have to stay with the times. Voice over IP telephone security system, this essentially makes, uh, every phone in City Hall panic button capable. Um, there's no secured entrance to the City Hall and there's also no pass keys to get in. Many of the offices are accessible to the public, so this is a safety feature, um, that would, uh, be for the employees of City Hall. Fire broadband rotors and modem Wi-Fi, this essentially makes the fire trucks hotspots. A lot of sewer equalized.
Wait a minute, explain that.
Sure. Um, to use any kind of tablet, um, or internet device, before we'd use air cards, which are unreliable and spotty.
Got it, okay.
This would make the fire truck itself a Wi-Fi hotspot, so.
Where they are, they got the internet right there.
Right.
Okay, good, thank you.
Sewer equalized sampling equipment, this would simply bolster what we can do at our existing lab. Um, our technician would take some, uh, certification courses to be able to be certified in ECOY testing, so this is the equipment that he would need to then be able to do that now in-house. Uh, garage tire changer, this is the one that charge, changes the large tires. There's two down there, one for the smaller, one for the larger, or, uh, large trucks. Wireless LAN controller, this is what, uh, for instance, controls the wireless capabilities within City Hall. Fire station countertop sink replacement, uh, wear and tear, um, they have some pretty, um, good pictures of why they need it replaced. Fire traffic signal activation LED for trucks entering intersections. Fire station radio speakers, this would go in the bays of all three fire stations so that the calls are more clear. Um, if you're ever in there, they sound muffled when they come through the bay. Uh, Hawthorne Park fencing, um, simply some new fencing to control access better, um, around the fields at Hawthorne Park. Fire rescue airbags, um, the chief can elaborate on these, but I believe they're expandable bags, um, that allow better access for rescue and type of install.
Yeah, lifting, yeah.
Okay.
Service center flooring, um, that's in the offices, um, uh, three, three administrative offices at the service center. Community center pool light LED bulbs, uh, energy efficiency and better lighting within the community center pool. Uh, a new welder for the service center, um, the service center ice machine, which all the, uh, park streets, all the workers use, uh, to get ice before they go out on summer days. It's old, it doesn't have a lid on it anymore. Garage tool chest sets to keep all their tools, um, the ones that they have are, you know, 25 years old and need to be replaced, and, um, a fire station gas range, which is exactly what it sounds like. It's a, a gas range for one of the fire stations, um, commercial grade, um, as it gets a lot of use. That is what we have funded for the 2016 to 2020 program. There's a list of items below that, that we didn't feel at this time were, um, high enough priorities, uh, or justified for this, uh, round of funding. That's what we have this time. You'll see before you, uh, a three-page letter addressed to, uh, the city manager and former finance director dated May 26, 2015. This sort of slipped through the cracks a little bit, um, and, uh, sort of our transition in, in the finance department. It was a request from Main Street for two items, directional downtown weight finding signs and municipal parking lot signage. Um, they usually funnel this through the city and then we would fund it through a department like we did, uh, Haymarket Square benches. Karen did those last year. I think that request came through Main Street. Um, so these were two items that they would like to include. We did not include it in this simply because, um, they asked us this afternoon, hey, did this stuff make it in? And we thought, oh man, you know, we didn't, we didn't even know that this existed. So, um, there is room in the CIP should you choose to fund these items.
Do you, okay, the suggested budget for the first one, is that $6,500?
Yes.
And?
$12,500 is what they're looking at for these two.
Okay, and so it would still be the $6,000 for the banners, the pole banners?
Um, these are also items that you don't have to decide on this evening. If you'd like some more information, staff can certainly get that to you. Um, they're also items that you could fit in the CIP contingency, um, should you choose at a later time to fund them.
Probably gonna have with the second one is on the 30 pole banners to identify the park, city's 17 parking lots. We don't necessarily have poles that are existent there in front of some of these to be able to put those up. So this, that, that's, that would be, that is just for the banners. If there is a lack of a pole that needs to be installed to put the banner on, that's an additional cost on top of the $6,000.
Okay, I think we need to know that then.
Yeah, we, we'd have to go out there and take a look at the 17 municipal parking lots to ascertain whether there's a pole there.
Can we decide on this later then?
This will come back in, uh, next week. Yeah, but, but again, you don't have to decide through the CIP process.
Yeah, cause if, for the pole banners, I mean, like you said, I'd really like to know what parking lots we're looking at, you know, what, what ones that would need more attention.
There's enough flexibility in the CIP that if you wanted to spend some time to look at this and get some more information, you could decide, say in January, sure, to go ahead and fund it.
Well, we'd do like we done in the past, we'd go ahead and, and temporary here set up, set it up, but each one of these come to us again.
Absolutely.
This is not a blanket and we can make those decisions at that time.
I just wanted to make you aware.
Especially with this smaller, small of amount, but it would be good to have more of a presentation on this, I guess. And it wouldn't rush you guys then.
That concludes my presentation. Again, we have representatives from all the departments who requested projects for the CIP funding. Should you have any questions on specific items, um, any other larger picture items, um, we'd be able to, Scott, Dan and I, we'd be able to answer.
One that I've got that's sort of bothering me is your 16th and Thornton. I think that's the Drew's home.
Yes.
The plan that you're looking at is going to accomplish what?
We've looked at a variety of plans over the years and this is an effort that we reviewed with, uh, one of our consulting engineers that had merit, because the other ones were very difficult and expensive to solve a problem going downstream from their house. Better, bigger drainage pipes. This is an upstream solution to study if you can detain water up that whole hillside going clear up past Ridge Road, going clear up toward top pile knob. There's a series of ways to detain the water, perhaps channel the water into underused basins or find some clever ways to do that. And this was an estimate of the study and what we thought we'd probably see for construction. It may be, uh, less complicated solutions such as drainage swales and small detention ponds. There may need to be some level of, I, you know, that's why we wanted to design it one year, see what made sense, maybe none of it makes sense.
Well, I'm just sort of concerned with the cost. In actuality, this is taking care of one complaint, correct? Cause none of the residents near it.
There, there are other houses that have flooding issues. There are other parts that were flooded out, driveways.
Right. They don't get the water in the house as much as the Drews do. But the others have their properties flooded out. This would be very similar to what we did over there on Eagles. When we put the big, large retention pond there, we caught the water runoff sheet flowing down that hillside before it entered onto all those residentials. This would be, the same kind of concept would be utilized here. Drews goes, gets the water inside your house, but there's other houses on a real heavy rain that will have their front yards and the street completely underwater.
And there, and there are some downstream of theirs that are, that project runs through one that's identified as 16th and Holman. The problems are not directly related to one another, but it is the same stream channel. And there are some homes in the vicinity of, uh, Vilas.
Yeah.
That have had issues as well. You can probably be able to address with some of this, but, uh.
Well, if you stop, if you stop the velocity of the water and, uh, the quality and velocity of the water, it will keep from erosion of that stream bed, some of the properties that are going down towards Vilas.
This is not a simple fixed solution. It's a series of smaller activities to address the problem that manifests itself in the Drews' house.
That's all I got. Thanks, Mike.
Well, also, I mean, I sat down with staff and kind of went through this, what we can do to put this in and then you can come back with the study session, the individual projects that we can individually look at at the time when it's closer to doing it too, so that we understand fully better what's gonna happen. Cause, and I know like the residents too that are affected by these are kind of interested in that.
Oh, definitely.
Yeah, any kind of engineering study is going to have to come back to the city commission for approval.
Yes.
And any kind of construction is going to have to come back to the city commission for approval. So you're gonna see these again.
That's all I have.
All right, okay.
I actually have one question going all the way back to, uh, the, uh, baseball field upgrades. We brought it, talking about the field up there on First Street. Do you know if this is going to include, uh, fencing on the, specifically would be the west side of the ball, ball field, third baseline?
Uh, we do not include fencing on this. Basically what this is, if you'll recall, over the past several years, we've gone into a lot of our game fields and we've removed the old infield material that was just a, a silk dirt clay mixture and we've brought in what they call ball field fines and, and we've put that in and laser graded it in and it's increased our play in all of our game fields. Well, we neglected and haven't done any of the practice fields, so that's what this thought process is. That doesn't mean that we can't think about that, especially if, if, if we've heard of complaints or issues with.
Well, I myself, I, I got grandkids and I, I was assistant coach for a while and we practiced up at that field and one of the main problems we've seen is you got balls that go off that third baseline down that hill and it's a very steep hill running right into a road.
Sure.
And it's constantly happening and the kids, of course, uh, had one little boy that had a twisted ankle going up and down that hill. So since we were making improvements to it, I'm just curious if that was something that should have been considered or, or will be considered?
We could probably actually add that, um, from our line item budget. I, I believe I have a fencing line item budget of a thousand dollars, something you're talking just, and that's a great, great point, cause, um, hadn't thought about that hill, right, Deborah, you're definitely right.
Yeah. Assistant coach is supposed to run down and get.
I almost twisted my ankle going up and down the hill too, yes.
So we could certainly run a fence line down there for that specific reason.
I, I would think that would be a good idea. Thank you.
Does the commission have any thoughts on the increase in the percentage of the GI bonds? Cause next time this would come back, we'd be at a commission meeting for, for a vote on this.
And that's, it's a charter ordinance, so we're talking, it would need a majority vote to pass, cause we are changing the charter ordinance on that just for, uh, you know, tech, the mechanics of it on that. And then if you do have any concern on that background of the history, you can also give it to staff.
We were looking to also put in the charter ordinance dedicating it all to asphalt overlay. That's just our plan. Certainly give the commission the flexibility to spend it how they see fit.
If you turn to page eight in your budget, with the front part, countywide sales tax, you'll notice on our expenditures debt reduction, that shows kind of, goes up a little bit each year, of course, but that shows kind of a level. That includes the increase to 28%, does it not?
No.
No, it does not?
No, that's.
That's a separate.
Yeah, that's the, 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 the principle and interest on these bonds that we're talking about is paid from the property tax in bond and interest fund.
Okay, that's right.
What this is, I mean, in a, in an indirect way, it's all related. Uh, this is essentially an allocation in the CIP to pay for bonds. So there's a connection, but it's a fairly indirect one.
You see the breakdown of our property taxes, it's 12.9 mils is general fund and 13 or something is bond and interest, something along those numbers, that's where the bond and interest is paid for.
And, um, let me just tell you a little bit about the charter ordinance. First consideration, if you choose to do that would be next, could be next week, but it does take, uh, majority, uh, super majority or four votes, uh, for second consideration. Then it has to publish for two weeks and then there is a 60-day protest period. So we would be looking at if we started next week, it wouldn't be adopted and in place until March 1st, 2016. It would take that long. So we would, if you do want to go with it, we would need to get started on it right away cause it would take until the March 1st if we started next week.
Do you want to put it on the agenda for next?
Okay.
Yep.
Anything else on this? Need any direct, further direction from us at all? We've got time to digest, ask questions, consider, but this will come back next, next week. Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Thank you. Let the room clear out there. Have it anyway. Our next item on the agenda is going to be the sidewalk committee multi-year plan. And Scott, how are we proceeding with that since you lost Mr. Kramer here, please?
You don't look like you were retired.
No, no. Uh, our sidewalk representative is, uh, Mr. Hooper. Am I correct? And of course, uh, the chair is Mr. Yule.
So Yule, why don't you come on up and join us at the table here?
And I think we do have, are there any, yes.
Yes, we have a few of your other.
Let's bring Steve up.
Comrades out there.
Sir.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Tennant, how are you?
Fair to mid.
Okay, Mike, I'll let you, Bob, I'll let you guys go through your proposed, uh, I know you spent a lot of time on this, so.
We kind of get recommendation on our sidewalk, hopefully we go a lot better tonight. Sidewalk committee is a standing committee that was created by the Leavenworth Commission to provide recommendations to the governing body as for sidewalk, uh, repairing construction in various areas of the city. Uh, they do meet on a regular basis and that allows them to be involved in both long-term planning as well as the ongoing sidewalk projects, uh, that are in place. Through their meetings, they've identified several locations that, uh, they would like to see sidewalks installed or repaired and you can see those locations on the attached sheets on your agenda items there. If you'll notice on those sheets, it identifies, uh, the projects as either repairs or, uh, new sidewalk. You'll notice that some of those locations are both repair and, and new sidewalks. Also for the, uh, proposed 2016 projects and some of the 2017 locations, those plans are already drawn. Uh, they do need some minor changes to those plans and a little bit of work on. They do need some minor changes to those plans and a little bit of work on. But that's what we're proposing for 2016, is to use the plans that are already in place so that we can get started on that project. Couple of the locations proposed in 2017 also have plans in place with some additional ones included in there, and then the proposed 2018 and 2019 locations. We've been lucky enough that with past designs, that we've actually been able to sign on ahead, so that's what gives us the opportunity to go ahead with what our proposals are. We have Bob and Steve here to answer any questions on, on how they looked at the evaluation and what they're, they see as their vision for sidewalks within the city and around, so.
I've, I've got a couple. When I looked at this, and it is, it's a big project, the 20th Street project, Eisenhower to Spruce. The criteria there and why you slotted this as a need for repair? Because we've done a lot of work on 20th Street.
We have done a lot of work. There's a lot of areas along 20th Street that have trip hazards. The sidewalk has broken up in a number of places due to some settling. That sidewalk is also an eight-foot wide sidewalk. It's more of a trail section than it is a sidewalk section. That's part of the reason the cost is so high. A lot of the ADA ramps along the route of that are not in compliance with current standards, so this project would fix a lot of trip hazards and broken sidewalk sections, as well as replace ADA ramps to bring them into compliance.
I'll have to tell you, that's a very heavily used area.
It is, and actually, that's what really happens. Anytime you put a sidewalk in, it does become heavily used where there was no traffic before. And I'd say, and I, you know, I haven't driven out there and really looked at it, which I do plan on doing, but there are trip hazards in a lot of places in town that haven't had any attention in a hundred years on that, that we're looking at. So, and I think basically, probably where I'm getting at is, I know, I know you're using also the need and the criteria, but I guess I'm really second guessing or questioning, do we need to update the criteria and expand more on, you know, some areas that aren't just always arterial and collector streets on that? Your thoughts on that?
The criteria that are shown are basically just a starting point. I mean, you can see a number of the, of the ones that we include really don't fit those categories. I think we've probably gotten 90 percent or better of the, of the ones feeding schools. That was our first criteria, although we're still finding pieces here and there, and of course, schools shift.
The districts changed with the.
Yeah, with the moving of the schools, yeah.
With the moving of schools too, and we haven't completely caught up with that.
But when I, and like you said, you haven't gone out and looked at it, and the difference between looking at streets and looking at sidewalks, you can drive down a street and go a block and say, that block was a, was a B street, the next block is a C, and the next block is an A. With sidewalks, you can't do it by the block. You've got to do by little pieces, and it's much harder to do. And you may remember, we had an engineering study done, I don't know how many years ago now, it's been 12, 15 years, where they, where they did look at each of the small pieces, and they came back, of course, that was prior to the sidewalk committee being informed, but anyway, their recommendation then was, there was like 94 miles of sidewalks that were either nonexistent or in poor or, you know, below average shape. So I don't disagree with you a bit, and if you come to the meetings, you'll see, we beat our heads against the wall with some regularity, because there are so many places that do need more support. Northeast, we were, at one point, we were told to back off of northeast because of, and as a result of.
I have different feelings on that, gentlemen. And I know you have to go with the flow of the governing body during the change.
You've got another revenue stream, or CDVG, that could be used in the northeast that can't be used elsewhere in the city.
And you will see some problem with that being done this year.
And we do have a project currently out to bid, which we'll bid tomorrow afternoon
for a project in the northeast area. It's about a $300,000 project.
It's repairs on Fourth Street and then some east-west work.
Osage from Fourth to Second Street and Dakota from Fourth to Second Street, with an option to do Second Street from Osage to Dakota on the west side.
To get a walking loop.
Right, yeah.
Anyway, I don't disagree with you at all, and I should point out that in addition to Steve, are we calling Steve number two, because Steve Weisen flew.
I seen you.
Phil Martin, Artie Johnson, and Dave Stoka, and I were all original members. Steve Tennant here and John Carroll joined the committee, you know, it's been several years for each of them already.
Yeah, but it's.
And we go through a system of where we each, for lack of a better word, nominate stretches, bring to the attention of the rest of the group these stretches, and then we vote on them. We rate them, one through five, with five being, we think it needs to be done right away, and we don't agree. You know? But what you have here basically is the top rated ones, where the group of us has said we feel these are the most important places to go right now. And what we're really asking for is you to look, and you might notice this year, 2016, a lot of money spent, because we didn't spend a lot of money last year, and that mostly comes from concern about whether or not we had the finances, and losing the finance director. We knew the money had to be there someplace, but we held off. So we're basically doing, basically two years worth of work this next year. But we'd like your at least tacit approval on, on what we have the next two to three years, so we can go on and continue to get our engineering done. And we'd like your approval for this next year in order to get bids and get the work done in the summer. And then we're certainly open to hearing suggestions of, of other places that I'd be happy, we have probably, in addition to what's shown here, at least three years worth of work.
Easily.
Oh, yeah.
That we didn't bother to show you because we re-rate them, and because schools change and neighborhoods change, there's no sense putting 2020, 21, 22, because odds are, we're gonna change, we'll change our minds between now and then.
How about the VA entrance to Ohio on Fourth Street? How did that, and then Chris, I don't recall that being in very bad shape. How did that make the list, do you recall?
Again, it's, I think.
The VA entrance to Idaho?
Yeah.
On Fourth Street?
Uh-huh.
A lot of the sidewalk there is in bad shape, and it's also got a lot of trip hazards at the locations where the sidewalk meets inlet tops, as well as ADA ramps.
Okay.
Our overall goal is.
Is that really heavily walk, though?
It's, start to see a lot more traffic than it used to.
But, I mean, you said, you know, if they build it, they will, they will come, and that's certainly what we've seen. And our long-term vision is to complete that sidewalk, clear down to the end of the city limits to connect with Lansing, and clear down in the luxury imports Eisenhower. Long-term, we'd like to get on down to there, and then perhaps talk to Lansing and us complete sidewalk in front of the Hallmark facility. Obviously, we can't do it in front of Co-op, because that's Lansing, but we approach them because we're not ready to do that piece yet. But the overall concept is to get Fourth Street complete at least on one side.
One thing that's included in the plan for each year too, is the cost share reserve, which allows property owners as well as business owners and the city to share in the cost of repairing or replacing sidewalks in, in front of their businesses or their residences. The city pays up to 250 a square foot for the repair or replacement of those sidewalks in conjunction with the property owner contributing, and the city also absorbs the cost of ADA ramps at the intersections if there's one that needs to be replaced at that location.
And how has the cost share demand been?
From two, we did some research, and from 2002 to 2015, we've basically spent $162,000 on the cost share, which is about a $12,000 to $13,000 a year average.
You might have noticed the server pro directly across from the bank there at Sixth and Delaware, just upgraded badly needed sidewalk.
Yeah, there's.
And they use the cost share program.
For 2015, right now, we're looking at about $38,000 in cost share. $20,000 of that was participating in the midday school sidewalk replacement on that location.
I've got a question for 2017. You've got down for your top line, West Middle School to Spruce, North Side, quarter of a mil.
Mm-hmm. That's actually kind of the completion of a project that was started a couple of years ago.
We've got a sidewalk on the north side.
There's a lot of repairs and some replacement of some old brick sidewalk, replace trip hazards.
Well, the sidewalk that I'm thinking about that's on the north side is only a couple of years old.
In places, it's only a couple of years old. In other places, it's considerably older and.
But going, going how far east?
About Grand is where the project stopped in prior years, so from, it's basically from Grand going west.
Well, what kind of traffic do we have on there that's non-existent?
About Spruce, right?
I'm thinking that there's better places to put that money.
Not a lot of school traffic, but we've still seen a fair amount of pedestrian traffic walking along Spruce. There isn't really a sidewalk on the south side of Spruce.
Yep, I know.
So this would upgrade what's on the north to make it.
You may remember that when we do the K-Link road projects, that KDOT requires us to do ADA ramps. You'd be amazed how much criticism I got for all the ADA ramps we put in that lead to nothing along Spruce, because they, here's a nice ADA ramp.
Right.
And then what a hundred years ago was a brick sidewalk, now it's.
Yeah, it's like that.
Grass, yeah.
So we've already made a major financial commitment by putting all those ADA ramps, and that's part of the reason, reason why it was ranked fairly high with us. We've already spent all this ADA money.
Over two years, actually.
But aren't the majority of those on the south side?
Well, probably.
We've got a lot of them.
Half of them are on the south side.
But we're concentrating on the north side.
Right now, because it connects on out. It's, it would be less, would we like to do the south side too?
Yep.
Absolutely.
Yeah, someday. Gotcha, okay.
And then, like the EMS to assisted living on Hughes Road.
There is.
That's a walking area?
St. Mary's College uses it a lot, and again, you'd look at the loop.
All right, okay, I'm thinking in, okay.
It's just in front of a nursing home there.
Okay, all right.
It's the one little piece that's missing from that entire.
Okay, it's okay, I have the wrong place in mind.
That's okay.
Like I said, yeah.
I got a map, because I have a hard time keeping it straight.
They have to give us a map every year because we always.
Yeah, that's a very small piece that completes a loop.
All right, I think we've grilled you enough.
Well, it's okay. I just assure you that I know you've got a lot of committees and boards in this, that work with you and for you, but this is a very active group. We meet typically 10 times a year for an hour to an hour and a half each, and I say it's one of the meetings I enjoy going to, because we often disagree, but we never leave without coming to a consensus.
I think the fair way to say is, is disagreeing is not disagreeable. And, you know, where we might have different opinions about how to best select what's next, the one thing we do, and are scrupulous about, is trying to assure we are following commission's standards and requirements for wrecking and stacking these. So we don't make it up. It's what you tell us you want is what we wind up talking about in meetings. And the levers that you've used in the past have largely been changing proportion of new work to the construction work, for example, or telling us to increase the amount in cost share, for example. Go, do not go to the northeast, go to the northeast. We take that as, as the limits. We don't go outside of what you prescribe, so.
And if we disagree, it's primarily because we're all passionate about it, and we know that even though we've put in how many miles since, did you figure, Steve?
The last time I calculated it, we were over 10, and that was like two years ago, yeah.
But when we started with 97, ten's just a good start.
Okay, well, since we've had a lot of changes in the commission since you had last input, I would really like the commission to look at the criteria and address this, and especially for.
I would agree with that.
Thank you.
I would agree with that.
Thank you for that support. So you need to put this on a study session, so, okay. And then.
We work for you.
We would like you, or all of your committee to come in, you know, give your input and stuff like that, so that, you know, like I said, that we come to it. I think it's just something that we need to visit and update from time to time with you too, because like you said, many things have changed in our community too.
Yes, but one thing remains constant is, when we fix sidewalks up, you find people walking on.
Yeah.
Kind of thing else you have to do is look at the history. Northeast, 100, 150 years ago, had sidewalks on both sides of the street.
Everywhere.
Well, why? Because people walked to the grocery store, they walked to school, and most of them walked to work. And you watch the progress of the town in post-World War II, everybody got a car, and why on earth would you want a sidewalk? Get in your car and go. And now, it's considered a quality of life issue. And we are criticized, because when people come to this town, thinking about locating this town, and they say, what happened to your sidewalks? So.
No, it's true, yeah, because we've even gone into that phase where not only are there not sidewalks, there's not curb and gutter.
Yeah, like my street.
And that was.
For the record.
A development philosophy back then.
There's no sidewalk on my street.
Which I totally disagree with.
I've been here for over 10 years, so I don't know.
I have two sidewalk on mine right across from my house. We get no priority on our own property.
But we'd be happy to meet with you.
Okay, all right, and we'll, we'll work, we'll work for that effort there to get that on a study session. Thank you so much. All it does show too is that there's a lot of need and never enough money too, which makes the job difficult. Just thank you for your, your help in these difficult decisions.
And we do have your approval to go ahead on, at least on the top, top part of the list, knowing the bottoms have changed.
Are, okay, do I, consensus that you at least want to go forward with the 2016?
I looked at him.
Yeah, we've already put the work in, it's already there. I think we should go ahead and look at the 2016, let it go, and then start maybe us meeting and finding out the criterias for the future.
Okay, yeah, okay, all right, that's the direction.
Thank you guys for your hard work.
Yes, thank you.
All righty. And that is the end of our agenda items for the evening. Since it's a study session, it's all that there can be, so I need a motion to adjourn.
Some moved.
Second.
I had a motion and a second to adjourn. Begin voting with Mr. Dedeky.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
And we are adjourned. Okay.